That the Trayvon Martin shooting and subsequently his death and the acquittal of George Zimmerman has become catalytic in that it's making us ask some tough questions about our own responsibility as a community. What are we willing to do as a community, both blacks and whites, to break this fallow ground, so to speak? Do churches need to begin to invite congregations that don't look like them to exchange pulpits, to have suppers together, to create a sense of community, to break down this otherness? We don't know each other. We have images, but we really don't know each other. We have perceptions, but perceptions are real to us, but they may not be based in truth. What else do we need to do? Particularly when you said that your father gave you the image. How about the young men who have no fathers? That's not a criticism, you understand that. What responsibility needs to be placed on us as a broader community when there are no fathers to create role models for our young black men? What needs to happen?
I'm glad you asked that question, and I would definitely say, yes, sir. We, blacks, whites, Hispanics, all of us need to come together. But I always like to look first at us African Americans. How can, I'm just going to speak my mind. How can we say, okay, African Americans and Caucasians need to come together when the African American churches in this community can't even come together? So, I'm not saying that we don't need them, but we need churches like Bethel, St. Paul, Potter's House, RJ Washington, all the African American churches to come together, because now this is where we're looking at. There are a lot of African American males without fathers. And those pastors, like your John Guns, like your Bishop McLaughlin, like your Bishop McKissick Juniors, they can come together, but as a whole, can the fathers come together? And I think if we can get our African American fathers to come together, our African American sons would now come together. And I think that's where we start. Not saying that we don't need the fellowship with all races, because we do. When the shooting went down, and not shooting, but when the verdict went down and came back, I'm in church, speaking to our kids, have hundreds of kids in there, and we get a text message from First Baptist youth pastor saying, man, we have to connect. And I felt so good, I told that to my youthmen, that is awesome. But then I said, man, we need to get with Shiloh. You know, we need to get with this other church that we don't connect with. So I think if we can come together as a culture, what my grandmama and great grandmama was doing back in the days when they were thrown together, we lost it now. And I think if we can get that back, come together, then it will be even stronger when all of us connect with the Caucasian churches.
I am concerned that if all our action requires a cataclysmic event, the Trayvon Martin verdict, the whole tragedy deserves our concern. It deserves some debate. What I'm concerned when, time after time after time, we need such an event to be spurred to action. I mean, African American males were dying on the streets of America every day for the last, for the last, for the last. And now we need this, and now we're saying, oh, this is a wake-up call. Really? Really? I'm pained, I'm not understanding how... Well, how many more Trayvon Martins do we need? At some point, and this is going to try to address the pastor's question, what are we willing to do? Well, when this happened last Saturday, my family and I were at a bowling alley. The event was put on TV, so we saw the verdict at the bowling alley as we were leaving. We drove home, and before we turned on the TV, I had Ernest, his sister, Jocelyn, who's a teacher, she's 24, her husband, and my wife. Before the television was turned on, we stopped, and I addressed it. And I addressed it as the head of the household. And what I asked everybody in that room, particularly the young people, was, what are you willing to do? Are you going to be mad about this for a couple of weeks and then walk away from it as soon as the Twitter fades? What does this tell you about your community involvement? What do you want to do, Jocelyn? What do you want to do more than you've been doing before? How are you, as a teacher, going to change some of these patterns we see that led to this? Ernest, how are you going to deal with these issues as a young African American male? Okay? One of the things that we talked about was access to everything that an American citizen has. African Americans have to access law enforcement. When something happens, we have to call them. When something happens in our neighborhood, we have to cooperate. They can't have to beat us down just to make us cooperate? I'm going to choose an African American thug over protection of my family? No can do. No can do. Or any other kind of thug. I am going to cooperate with the police because I am an American citizen and I have rights. And until we constantly access those rights, I asked my son, you access those rights, you're entitled to everything, and even though they may begrudgingly give it to you, make them give it to you. And we have to act like that. We have to vote, not just when Obama's on the ticket. We have to vote every time. Part of the reason that that law, Stand Your Ground, was passed is because in 2010, African Americans, Latinos, stayed home, and conservatives all across the country got Republican governors, Republican legislatures, and now 37 states, with the help of Alec, have passed Stand Your Ground laws while we're tweeting. Okay? Come on now. Come on now. All right? So, we have to have civic involvement. I was glad to hear that from one of the other panelists, but we have to have civic involvement. But I don't think that the way to a better future for my son is to constantly have to be knocked over the head with cataclysmic events. I think we have plenty of evidence of the things we need to do, and we need to get going.
The topic of race relations is an ongoing topic. We won't sell anything here tonight. And not that we're trying, we're just having conversation. This whole event with the Trayvon Martin case has sparked all types of emotions throughout our country. Some peaceful, some not so peaceful, some hatred, some who agree with it, those that are with certain groups have differences of opinion. And Attorney Gillette, I almost called you Pastor Gillette, but Attorney Gillette has actually hit on a couple of things, a couple of points that I wanted to make. We have to establish, before we have these forums, before we attend these meetings, before we march and rally, we have to have a dialogue with our own children and our children's children. We have to talk to them. They look to us as their leaders. He said he's talked with his family as the leader of the house, probably as an attorney also, but as the leader of the house. We know you're an attorney, so he's got it in his blood. But we have to have that dialogue. We've got to talk to them. It's a constant thing that you have to do with your children. You've got to teach them, then you've got to train them, and then you've got to trust them that they're going to do what you've taught them and trained them to do. And then Dr. Vidi kind of hit it as well. We've got to start, not when they're in high school, not when they're getting ready to go to college, we've got to start at a young age. Ages nine through 12, statistically has been proven that it's the most impressionable time of their life. It's that transition from elementary to middle, all of the influences that are out there, they can be lured with. That's what helps deter crime. When you catch them at an early age, you begin to teach them the laws of the land. You begin to teach them what to stay away from, the type of people to stay away from. And I'm glad you mentioned the fact that you've got to cooperate with law enforcement. You've got to stress that in your children. And you have to let them know that the law enforcement component of our society is not the enemy. The law enforcement, the police officers are not the enemy. You may have had a bad experience with the law enforcement officer. Most of your bad experiences involve possibly getting a traffic citation or they called because you and your wife was fussing or something, and they had to take one of you to jail. I'm not saying any of y'all, but I'm just saying. So the bad experiences sometimes is something that you've done to create attention to yourself by law enforcement. But overall, you've got to teach your children how to engage, when to engage, what to do, what to say, but you've got to have that dialogue. You can't wait for a disaster to happen and be reactive. You've got to be proactive.
I mentioned earlier to you, I asked how many of you knew what Alec was? Alec is an acronym for American Legislative Exchange Council. And as Attorney Gillette said, while we have other distractions, reality shows, other things, there was a movement, there was a movement that was intentional and purposeful to take over legislatures, states, to change the laws to fit a particular agenda. It is not accidental that over 30 states have Stand Your Ground laws. That was the work of the NRA and Alec. The tragedy is most of you didn't even know who Alec was. We have to turn off maybe, or TiVo, Housewives or whatever, and turn on CNN. Turn on C-SPAN. We have to take responsibility. Nikolai Viti is not responsible to educate your children, you are. He is responsible to help you educate your children. But I want to ask how many go to PTA meetings? I want to ask that. But it takes involvement. It takes involvement by everyone to make this happen. The last thing I will say this in closing is that we need an intracultural dialogue. We talked about dads not being in the home, that we did. We talked about Dr. Rap music and all that. All right. We have to have an intracultural dialogue within our own community about how we take responsibility for our community. Because no one else can take responsibility for our community but us. That's our job. And that also means that when somebody brings a flat screen into your house and you know they don't have a job. I think we've, I got a couple of questions here that I think really have been, for the most part, addressed, particularly as it relates to how our children have to behave in this environment. You know, reaching for a cellphone. Say, can a child sees a police car come up, and they decide to reach for a cellphone to call mom or dad? Could reaching for that cellphone get them shot?
Overall, yes.
That's a problem.
They have to be taught what to do and what not to do around law enforcement. If an officer feels threatened, as though you're reaching for something that could hurt him or hurt someone else, by law, he has the right to execute deadly force. Deadly force is any force that is likely to cause great body harm or death. And then a question always comes up, and I'll go ahead and answer it now if it's going to come up. Do the officers, when they shoot, do they shoot to kill? The proper answer is that they shoot to stop the threat. Wherever that bullet lands to stop the threat, that's what they're trying to do. More than likely, because of their training, they're trained to shoot center mass, where all your vital organs are. There's no such thing as a warning shot, number one. There's no such thing as aim for the leg. There's no such thing as aim for the arm. They are going to shoot to stop the threat. So if you're, if someone is walking up to an officer and he's reaching in his pocket, even for a cellphone, if the officer says, stop, let me see your hands, stop and let him see your hands.
Come on, let's put our hands together for you. There were a lot of persons that we initially talked to. Okay, there were a lot of, and let me just share this. I think tonight, the start, the goal of tonight was to start the dialogue. And the goal is an hour and a half, and we're at 8:20. Because, so we want to get persons home, we want to be respectful of time. Because for some reason, we love to stay forever and go nowhere. And I know that sounds strange coming from me, but I can disconnect a panel from church. That's my dysfunction. But there are some persons, there is one person I at least want to come and greet us tonight because he represents a very strong activist group in our community. And I would like President Bowden, who has come tonight, just come and greet us, who represents the Baptist Brotherhood. Let's put our hands together and receive him as he comes and just kind of greets us tonight.
Again, we want to thank Pastor Guns for putting this together tonight. I'm glad to be here because of the diversity training that I've had. And as I looked at the panel, I think they deserve another hand because it's a very diverse group. I was out most of the week in Washington. I'm a part of a program at the Holocaust Museum entitled Lift Every Voice. It's a literacy program that we brought to Fernandina, to First Missionary Baptist Church some years ago, along with diversity training from all across the nation. Folks come from across the nation to the Holocaust Museum for diversity training. One thing I discovered about the Jews, they never let you forget where they come from. And they never let you forget where they are today and who they are. Oftentimes, we don't leave stones. And we fail to tell our children where we've come from, what we've gone through, and where we are. And for that reason, many of our kids, they're privileged to have things that we didn't have at their age, and for some reason, they think that they've arrived. The verdict last Saturday was a major setback in America. Not just this community, not just Seminole County, but in America. It was a major setback. And so we are reacting to what has happened. And I say to us that not only do we need to be more proactive, we need to be more proactive in our homes, in our churches, and in our communities. Leaving the Holocaust Museum, one of the things that's always impressionable upon me every time I go as I start the tour on the fourth floor, move to the third floor, but before you exit the second floor, there's a writing on the wall. And that writing on the wall in the Holocaust Museum says, "They came for the socialists, and I did not speak up because I was not a socialist." Then they came for the trade unionist. And again, I did not speak up because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews. And again, I did not speak up because I was not a Jew. Finally, they came for me, and there was no one left to speak up for me. We've got to speak up. We've got to speak up through our votes. 2008, Barack Obama went into the White House. We partied, they started plotting. 2010, we did not go back and vote like we should have. He did not have a supporting cast. So everything that he brought up, they fought it tooth and nail. And a whole lot of stuff went on and got passed and moved through the House and the Senate because we did not go back and vote. We put him back in in 2012. It's voting time next year. Are we going to the polls? Or are we going to sit at home? And then they're already plotting for 2016. Don't let it slip out of your hands. We've got to speak up. We've got to come together as a people, we've got to come together as a community. I agree with our young pastor, who says we've got to come together as preachers. Since I became president of Baptist Ministers Conference, I think these brothers here can testify that we've been trying to reach out across denominational lines and across the board to bring everybody in, to make us one community. And so I say to us, let's not just leave here with dialogue, but let's put the dialogue to action. First of all, I need to say this in closing. I know some of you have questions or wanted to have this moment to share. We decided that this first one would be more geared towards the panel. We will do this again with the opportunity to allow for floor, but can I be very honest with you all? Sometimes I think when we release moments, some people mismanage it. And if I can be very honest with you, I had a very real encounter with the Lord on the plane this week, on Tuesday, going to Chicago. I, when I was burdened to birth Operation Save Our Sons with a lot of people being a part of this vision, I felt overwhelmed and unprepared because this is not a local movement, this is a national movement. The awkwardness of it was, sitting on the plane, the Lord said, "I do not need to raise up another leader who instigates anger in an angry people." I hate to say it, but it's time for leadership to encourage reconciliation, restoration, forgiveness, unity, wholeness. Some of y'all ain't clapping. We got to stop becoming millionaires out of anger. We need to stop having these organizations that all they feel their responsibility is to fight. At some point, this is the genius of this panel. It is inclusive. And I know everybody had another person that wasn't at the table, but you want to know what, Felicia? The people at the table represent a cross-section. And it's time for us as African American leaders to start building bridges and tearing down walls because if we don't, we can't change it by ourselves. Whatever changes happen in this country, it's got to happen with Democrats, Republicans, independents, blacks, whites, Latinos, rich, poor, North Side, East Side, West Side. Whether you want to agree or not, it's not going to change until we sit at the same table. We have enjoyed some successes, but the verdict did show us we're still polarized. No one should have celebrated last week. Because George Zimmerman didn't win, America lost. But it wasn't just about a verdict. It's about something bigger than that. And maybe tonight, we're taking the first step in this city to do something significant. So I appreciate everyone who has come tonight. You may ask what's next. Well, anybody that knows John Guns knows I don't do anything for cameras, and I don't do anything one time. And so, we are going to partner with everyone that's doing something because we're all on the same page, we're all on the same team. In closing, we are going to pray for the Dream Defenders tonight because we want to encourage and cover them as they fight and as they stand for something that I think many of us are comfortable with. Pastor Gundy wanted us to announce that there is a town hall workshop at Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church, July 29th. SCLC, the NAACP, and others are coming together, breakout workshops for solutions. And so we're going to encourage everyone to join them. On today, the Friends of Northwest Jacksonville had a very powerful educational forum, as I heard. And there's a lot of positive things going on. I appreciate everyone. What's next for us is September 14th. We're having our Fathers to Fathers event, where we're having fathers talk to fathers because we believe that a lot of times we're looking for mentors when we just need to go get their daddy. So we're trying to put daddies in the place where we've been trying to put mentors. I thought it was interesting that Attorney Gillette spoke so passionately, not as an attorney, but as a father. And many of us know that there are some things only your daddy can tell you. And so I think it's amazing that we had such a cross-section. And so September 14th, Fathers to Fathers, as well, as well, Operation Save Our Sons is a valuable organization. You have been given an envelope if you want to give something. If not, you don't have to. We are in the process of organizing. And I would like all of the persons who are a part of Operation Save Our Sons to stand. All of you who represent an organization that is actively a part of Operation Save Our Sons, would you stand? And let's celebrate all of our partners, all of our teammates, all of our partners, all of our teammates. As you can see, Operation Save Our Sons is not simply one of anything. It's many. And we're committed, and we're grateful to God for your presence. So if you would like to support us, we have a lot to do. We have a major event coming up. We are starting to set up chapters. I was in Chicago preaching on Tuesday. A young lady walked up to me and said she's been waiting for an organization like Operation Save Our Sons. There are now over 45 cities that are interested in setting up a chapter of Operation Save Our Sons. Our goal is 100 cities by the end of the year. And it came out of Jacksonville, Florida. Y'all acting like you ain't got it yet. And it came out of Jacksonville, Florida. I want to publicly thank our superintendent, who has thrown, and I have texts from him that I will show you, where he said he is 150% behind this. And I saved the text just in case he ever becomes 99%. But he is a phenomenal leader, man. That dude ain't scared of nothing. Man. Man, he ain't scared of nothing. You know, he's a member of my church, you know, let's not even talk about that. So, you know, I claim him. You know, people come to me and say, you need to talk to your member. I say, who? The superintendent. Oh, yeah, him. Yeah. But I'm very proud of the man he is and thankful. Finally, I need to say one other thing outside of all of these amazing people on this panel. There's a lady I met for the first time. I will not even try to pronounce her name. But thank you for representing the Hispanic community. You are an amazing woman. And it was great to have your voice at this table. It was great to have your voice at this table. Lillian Duncan, you are an incredible woman. Thank you so very much. And for all of you, Mia Jones, you are, you are there. I will vote for you if you run for dog catcher, I'm voting for you. Amen. And Ken Jefferson, you just need to be the sheriff. That's my only political statement. You just need to be the sheriff. I'm just saying. Probably don't mean nothing to nobody, but I'm just saying. So, we are hard at work. Operation Save Our Sons is full steam ahead. If you're interested, let us know. Again, our next event is Fathers to Fathers, September 14th. Our team is working on it. We have two things in development, and so you'll know that we're working. We are developing a mentoring program where fathers will be taught on how to be fathers. Because we believe, sadly but so, President Bowden, there's a lot of men that don't know how to be fathers. And so we've had a program developed, being developed. It's going to go under some very scrutinizing eyes over the next week, but it's an amazing program. And the young lady who has written it and developed it is here today. And Natasha, why don't you stand so we can celebrate your work? She pulled the... She pulled it together very quickly. It's a tremendous program. And Sister Sharon, that's the one I want you to look at, and I thank you. As well, we are gonna be developing, and I've talked to a young man already, we're gonna develop a conflict management program or strategy. And Ken Jefferson talked about it, and the superintendent talked about it. We have to teach our young, listen, here's reality. For an African-American male, we have to teach him how to live in his own skin. We can sit around here, President Bowden, and talk all the stuff we want to talk. We gotta teach African-American males how to live in their own skin. What does that mean? It means what I just said. We have to teach us how to live in our own skin. Reality is, is that many of our young men are not very good at conflict management. Many of them don't know how to manage conflict with authority, they don't know how to manage conflict with each other. In Chicago, over seventy African-American males were killed by African-American males the Fourth of July weekend. I was in Chicago. The young lady said to me honestly, "There are neighborhoods in Chicago worse than Beirut." She said, "There are neighborhoods where the police don't even go into the neighborhood unless someone is killed. They have just decided to stay out." So, while we're sitting here mad at everybody else, Charles Gillette has hit it on the head, we gotta take accountability for our own neighborhood. And so, Operation Save Our Sons is gonna be leading an effort to develop a conflict management approach. How do we teach young men how to handle conflict with each other, how to handle conflict with other races, and how to handle conflict with authority? I think in the end, we're gonna all be better. Thank you for coming tonight. We're looking forward to making this a national model, a national movement. We got a feeling that CNN and Fox and all them folk gonna come one day and say, "Jacksonville, we need to show the world how to do this thing," and they're gonna ask us, and we're gonna show them, because we are on the right track and we're doing the right thing. Come on, everybody stand. Thank you all for tweeting and texting and Facebooking and all of the stuff that comes with it. Okay? If you have an envelope and you want to give something tonight, you can bring it to the front. Again, every dollar, every dime, every cent goes to Operation Save Our Sons. Every penny of it will go to Operation Save Our Sons. We are a startup organization, and oftentimes, what kills African-American organizations or kills organizations that are trying to address certain issues is that we don't get the support we should get. Community Connections, and I so appreciate them, I see some of their staff and board here tonight. Community Connections has so graciously consented for us to utilize the L. Lewis Center as our national headquarters. So, I thank you, Philip, I thank all of you from Community Connections who are partners with us, and everyone who's doing what they are called and created to do. I thank you. If you want to help us do this work, please see one of our team members. I'm gonna have them, in fact, stand in the front now. All of our partners, just kind of go stand in the front so persons can see you, and all of our partners, from fraternities to full-service schools, to nonprofits, to educational institutions, all of our partners, and there are many others who are not standing yet, but all of our partners. We are excited about this, about what we're doing, and so, if you want to find out anything, if you want to connect, see one of them, and they can, you know, if nothing else, tell you, you know, tell you that, you know, we'll take your name and number, because we're looking for persons who are serious about this. We are not competitors, we're teammates, and we ought to start acting like we're teammates. If everybody reach out, hold someone's hand. Bishop Rudolph McKissick Jr. was to be here tonight, but he wasn't feeling well. He was supposed to be on the panel, and so, I want to thank Anthony O'Neil for standing in his place, and I want to thank again all of our panel for being here. When we walk out of here tonight, no one is to think that we didn't accomplish something. We accomplished a whole lot. It was simply called sitting at the table. Sometimes, sitting at the table is more than what you say when you're at the table. And tonight, sitting at the table starts the healing process in our city, because we got a lot of work to do. John Newman, you're amazing, man. Thank you. You're amazing. You're amazing. Let us pray. Father, we will never be the same again. And for all of the cynics who think that this was a one-horse race, and we were just simply here for show, five years from now, when young men are changing, growing, graduating, marrying, finishing college, folk will discover that we were serious about this thing. God, we now pray for the Martin family. We even pray for the Zimmerman family. God, we pray not just for Florida, we pray for America. And Father, strangely enough, we're grateful for a president that had the courage to open his mouth yesterday and to speak truth to power, protect and cover him, protect our legislators. Even our governor, God, touches hard. Make us one state to your glory. For those young people, God, who are standing strong and firm, for those who are doing the right thing, we cover them. For Dream Defenders, God, for every organization, black, white, Latino, Korean, doesn't matter, that is serious about social justice, we cover them now. And we pray, God, for success as we turn as a nation, by turning as a city, by turning as a neighborhood, by turning as a household, by turning as an individual. In Jesus' name, amen.